Last week, we had an escursus kind of going into some Psalms, a few New Testament verses. And that was mostly to explore complaint. Not so much lament. There are lots of laments in Scripture. But sometimes within our modern Christian mindset, we're a bit anxious about complaint. And telling God, I have this offense against you. One of my classmates at seminary, he was, he came from the broader evangelical background before he came Lutheran. And he was saying that he felt like a lot of the people he was talking to thought that they were more pious than the Psalmists because, oh, they never complained. They never questioned God or his motives. And they just had 100% faith that everything will be absolutely hunky-dory and great. But when you actually look in Scripture, that's not exactly what it says. Now Lutherans, I don't think we go all the way towards the idea that complaint is wrong. But there is that slight tendency that in our piety, we should not blame God for anything. Which is not absolutely what we see in Scripture where we can say, well, why, oh God, is this happening? And are you putting me through this? And we should be fairly open to actually doing this because these are, these are the feelings that we're going through. These are our experiences and it's an authentic view of faith. And God as our ultimate comforter should be the one who is open to hearing us, whatever we have to say. Now, we'll look into, we'll be looking into specifically Job's complaints today. Job, chapter three. I'm not entirely sure how far we'll get into this. Considering how fast we're going through chapters one and two. But yeah, this also took me a while when I was leading the study in my vicarage congregation. And we spent about a week on each of the three parts. So it ended up being at least three weeks to go through chapter three. Oh, I was vicar in Morden and Winkler, Manitoba. Plagues?
Yes.
Yeah, Alex Plagueis, he vicarred here seventeen, eighteen years ago. He was the summer, no, 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 he was full, no, he summer vicarred in Winnipeg. He was full time. He did his full vicarage here, yeah. And I think he was between three or four churches. Can't remember.
Three pastors down here circulated him around.
And I'm pretty sure that's what happened. I know he said that he was at every church on the southern part of the island at some point. That's fair enough. Actually, even at my, at my vicarage, I was able to go up and do a service at well, at Portage Le Prairie, which is an hour and a half north, thereabouts. So he can get around if some pastors wanted to need a break, go on vacation or something.
You were field worker at Grace for what?
Oh, yeah, I was, I was field worker at Grace Lutheran. Not well, though.
No.
Oh, wait, Siegel? Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I didn't know you were related to the Siegels. Okay. Yeah, okay. They kept inviting me out to their place, but they lived like ways out of the city.
Yeah, did that mean Earl?
Yeah, that was Earl. So Earl kept inviting me out there and I was intending to go. But then I always had my family, like I was always able to get down to my family for those holidays and whatever he was inviting me. So I never quite got out there. But I really appreciated him doing that. He also kept telling me about his brother, who's a pastor out in Okinawa, Asos. Keep wanting to say, yeah, I keep wanting to say Okinawa for some reason, but no, Asos. Anyways, we should probably get to the Bible since this is recording now. Looking into Job, chapter three, this is the opening moment. It begins with after this, at least in the NIV translation, begins with after this. So the this that it is after is Job's affliction. This is loss of animals, servants, family members, all his children. And not only this, but afflictions to his flesh. And then also infliction to his marriage. And as we were discussing a couple of weeks ago, we don't quite know the motivations of his wife and why she was prompted to say, curse God and die. Whether she was angry at Job or just wanted to suffer an end or maybe even another reason. There's multiple ways to view it. Yeah, his marriage is in rough straits. And chapter two ends with the three friends coming and mourning with him for seven days, seven nights in silence. Which can be fairly effective, just having somebody there, not needing to say anything. So after all this, Job has been able to have some processing time for his grief or his losses. And he's also been granted a bit of an audience with his three friends acting as comforters. The actual term there, friend, is a very loose translation, even though you find it in most translations. The actual word means comforter. But we'll see what misful comforters the friends actually are as we continue forward. So they're not like buddy buddies or anything like that. They're more comforting friends, the ones who come when you're in trouble. But then there for some day, some night, Job feels comfortable enough that he can actually express his feelings and vocalize his grief.
But they sort of be like elders?
The concept of the comforter, no. But these three friends would be similar to the concept of elders. As we go through the speeches, they will talk about how they've been trained by their forefathers and they follow in their traditions and stuff like that. So they would be like the elders in our modern congregations, a little bit. But yeah, that's not what the word, not to the word friend slash comforter means in this sense. But they are, they are those types of people. So to get the full force of Job's speech here, I'll read through the entire thing. We'll probably only get to the first or second sections of this. But I just want to read through the entire thing so you get a feel of it. "After this, Job opened his mouth and cursed the day of his birth." He said, "May the day of my birth perish." "And the night it was said, a boy is born." "That day, may it turn to darkness. May God above not care about it. May no light shine upon it. May darkness and deep shadow claim it once more. May a cloud settle over it. May blackness overwhelm its light. At night, may thick darkness seize it. May it not be included among the days of the year nor be entered in any of the months. May that night be barren. May no shout of joy be heard in it. May those who curse days curse that day. Those who are ready to rouse Leviathan. May its morning stars become dark. May it wait for daylight in vain and not see the first rays of dawn. Pardon not shut the doors of the womb on me to hide trouble from my eyes. Why did I not perish at birth and die as I came from the womb? Why were there needs to receive me and rest that I might be nursed? For now I would be lying down in peace and I would be asleep and at rest. With kings and counselors of the earth who built for themselves places now lying in ruins. With rulers who had gold who filled their houses with silver. Or why was I not hidden in the ground like a stillborn child? Like an infant who never saw the light of day. There the wicked cease from turmoil and there the weary are at rest. Captives also enjoy their ease and they no longer hear the slave driver shout. The small and the great are there and the slave is freed from his master. Why is light given to those in misery and life to the bitter of soul? Those who long for death that does not come? Who search for it more than for hidden treasure? Who are filled with gladness and rejoice when they reach the grave? Why is life given to a man whose ways hidden, whom God has hedged in? For sighing comes to me instead of food. My groans pour out like water. What I feared has come upon me. What I dreaded has happened to me. I have no peace, no quietness. I have no rest, but only turmoil." Observations, concerns? Put it mildly, yes.
He's very thorough with his observations of what a good life is and what one is not.
When is about to make conversation?
I struck me as, I mean, obviously kind of depressing, but it also struck me as the, was it Paul that said, he'd rather die?
Who will save me from this body of death? Or what do you think of another one?
The one that he said like he'd rather.
Oh, in Philippians where where he could be, he had a choice between being in the body or being seen in the face of Lord. And he didn't know which to choose, but if he had a preference, he would say going to the Lord, yes. Oh, okay.
Because he's talking about it being better for some. Trying to make sure my tone is turned off because my last joke too. When he was talking about, you know, the slaves are free and like, to me, it sounded like he was talking about heaven. And it's in some of those references and.
And therein is kind of the rub of the whole, of the whole speech. At the beginning of the sheet I gave you, there's four different characteristics that I, that I'm trying to address there. One of these is the monologue. Now, this is properly speaking, a monologue. So God is not addressing the friends. He's not addressing God. He's just outpouring his soul. So it's not as though he's trying to appeal to God for some sort of, for something. But he's just musing about the situation as it is. Now, the unfortunate thing is, he's not talking about heaven. Which is the, one of the depressing things about the book, about the speech. So that he's not even considering the blessedness of being with God. And you can kind of see throughout the book of Job, the cosmology of the Old Testament, where they're not really conceiving of entering into what we, what the popular idea of heaven is, where which, which would be like up in the clouds, singing with hearts and stuff. Well, that's nowhere in the Bible anyways. But he's not thinking of going anywhere for the blessed place for men in the, or sorry mankind. For mankind in the Old Testament is more figured as a paradise on earth or the Eden, basically. So if we're trying to look at that type of heavenly realm on earth, it's fairly absent from the book of Job. When we're going through it, you can kind of see it in the divine speeches. It's not really addressed. But when we get down to it, we'll be talking exactly what Job means. But more or less, he's talking about Sheol, land of the dead. It's not a heaven. He's considering going down to the pits because he feels that, excuse my language, going to hell is better than his life now.
I would never associate hell with rest and ease and.
That's how bad he feels. Yeah, because he's, it's kind of warping his perceptions at this point in time, his understanding of what this means.
But he's suffering depression, isn't he?
Oh, yes. Oh, very much so. You find this with people who are considering suicide. I'm not going to say that Job is suicidal. We'll be, we'll be going and talking about that later on as we go through chapter three. But you'll find this in people with suicidal thoughts. Who are considering killing themselves because they think death, in however, however way they conceive it, is more preferable to the life now. So when Job is looking into Sheol, he's considering it as someplace more restful than on earth. There you know what you're going to get. There you don't have to deal with all this grief and loss around you. You can just not be. And it's a somewhat naive view of Sheol. Job will revise his views as we go through the book about what Sheol actually means. But essentially, and I won't say, I won't say that any of the Job speeches are lying in this sense. But he's just saying, saying this from a very particular point of view at this point in time.
So when he's talking about, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
When he's talking about the kings and counselors of the earth who built for themselves a place now laying ruins. Is he saying that even if they're leaders, that because they do not follow God or believe in God, this is just this place of nothingness?
Basically, yes. Again, we'll, we'll be getting to that as we start going through the, through the chapter.
When you were talking about Sheol, where, what verses are you talking about? When you'd rather be in hell?
Specifically, this would be verses thirteen to nineteen. He doesn't use the word Sheol.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, now I would be laying down in peace. I don't think of hell.
Yeah.
He doesn't say in peace, he says at rest. I think there's a difference.
He does say in peace.
Yeah, for now I would be laying down in peace. I would be asleep and at rest. Now, my translation says, I am not at ease nor am I quiet. I have no rest. That's the same verse? That's at the end. What verse are you talking?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
I'll make sure.
I would have been arrested, says. Doesn't say in what peace. For then I would have lain down and been quiet. I would have slept and I would have been at rest.
Quiet.
Well, quiet. I don't think it'd be quiet.
But I see that peace as being without conflict. I don't see it as being with God.
Yeah, it's basically the idea being conveyed is more of a ceasing of what is now, of the turmoil that is now.
And not a peace that God, that passes all understanding.
It's not, it's definitely not the peace of God which surpasses all understanding. Looking into the original Hebrew, it is just kind of the word for resting. Taking a break. So if, so when we're considering what he's saying here, he's trying to take a break from life. So instead of living, he's now not living.
Not in a way you can't really blame him right now.
Yeah. So this, so this is why we're going to be talking about suicide later on and what all this means. But so the four points that I kind of wanted to look at with the chapter overall is first, this is a curse. There is the curse element to it. In verse one, after this, Job opened his mouth and cursed the day of his birth. So Satan was hoping that Job would curse God. Instead, Job blesses God. Which is a reversal of the Hebrews. So Satan is using the colloquial use of bless as curse. So you're going to bless God to his face and then Job does bless God in the proper sense. But here, he's actually actively cursing the day of his birth and speaking against it.
But isn't that wrong? I mean, God provided his birth. So he's cursing what God has given him.
Yep.
He's not cursing God per se, but he's still cursing what God has given him.
Yep. That's accurate. Yeah.
He shouldn't be, but that's where his mind is.
And you will find this with a lot of people as they go through periods of grief. And I won't outright condemn them for it. And that's more of a pastoral approach instead of a systematic doctrinal approach to it. Categorically, no, we shouldn't be cursing all the gifts, any of the gifts of God. But from a pastoral approach, they're cursing, Job is cursing the day of his birth, not so that he will curse God. He's not cursing the day of his birth because he hates what God has given. He's cursing the day of his birth because to him, it represents the beginning of the grief that he experiences in life. So rather than, so the words themselves. They're saying, I'm cursing the day of my birth. I'm cursing what this gift God has given me. But the actual meaning is more, I am cursing the pain which has coincided with this gift that God has given me that has been associated with this. And this is more of a poetic use of the term than, than a very literal understanding. Which, this is also very important to understand when you're going through the book of Job because a lot of it is poetry. It is very figurative. And people tend to speak in poetic terms all the time and they don't actually realize. And Oh, no, even today. In poetic terms, yes. See, we usually associate poetry with verses and going through stanzas and stuff like that. That is not been what poetry has been understood to be traditionally. Poetry is the more figurative, non-literal, the emphasis on meaning over form. And you will find a whole bunch of ancient poetry that is, that is not exactly chopped up into lines. You will also find a lot of ancient prose that is chopped up into lines. For our modern sensibilities, we do like to have everything nice and chopped up into lines and nice, metrical points. But that's not really how ancient poetry works. Especially when you come into Hebrew poetry. You can have one line that's one word long or you can have a line that is several, I don't know. Like ten words long, but there's still the same, there's still one line. There's still a single thought. Hebrew poetry is nice that way because each line is trying to express a thought or an opinion rather than just have a certain amount of beats in what, to have a metric going through, through your poetry. Oh, I haven't even had the poetry talk in Hebrew, of Hebrew. Okay. Usually, I remember to do this beforehand. So Hebrew poetry, what it tries to do is it tries to emphasize meaning. And you'll notice that the verses in Hebrew poetry, whether this be in Job or Psalms or even one of the prophets like Isaiah, you will find that each line typically, not always, but typically tries to contain one idea relating to things. So first line, "May the day of my birth perish." So he's relating day of birth, perishing. In the next line, "And the night it was born," was, it was said, sorry, "and the night it was said, a boy is born." Night, so a boy was born. Now, Hebrew likes to have paired couplets in terms of thought process. So day corresponds to night, perish corresponds to said, a boy was born. So when we read the second line of verse three, chapter three, verse three, we are to imply that the night itself was to perish, even though it doesn't say that in that line because it corresponds with the preceding idea. This is Hebrew parallelism in poetry. If you read the first line and it doesn't make sense, just read the second line and hopefully that will help make sense in the first line because they will typically be in parallel. And there's three major ways to actually do this. The most, the first would be complementary parallel reading, where it's the same ideas expressed in the first as the second, exact same idea. Just different words. So day has been switched to night here, perish has been switched to said. There is also less common, but still present, disjunctive parallelism, where the exact opposite idea is in the second line. So if, I don't know if there's one here. I don't think there is. Because Job seems very consistent here. But this would be like saying, "May the day of my birth perish." "May all those in the night live," something like that. That would be a disjunctive. Giving the exact opposite idea. And the third type, which is, I would say, far more rare. I very rarely see it unless, and usually the translations translate it out, so it puts it into more of the the complementary parallel, parallelism. Is a constructive or emphatic parallelism, where it continues the idea of the first, but it's meant to give a better, more of an emphasis in the second half. So you intensify something by repeating the idea. So you intensify something by repeating the idea. And yeah, I'm pretty sure only, maybe not even five percent of the, of the verses I see in Old Testament poetry need that criteria. Does happen every once in a while, but not often. So, so Hebrew poetry is not divvied up into nice little units as we might want it to, we might want with our English poetry, where we have a particular concept with rhymes scheme and certain amount of beats per line. It is trying to communicate idea, idea. Sometimes you have three, three lines per verse, or even four lines per verse. But it's meant to convey a single meaning. Or convey a couple of different meanings that are meant to contrast. So you have a meta meaning of the verse. So when we're reading Job, it is very important to read it within a larger context, rather than just a bare literal reading of the words. And this is difficult. Because usually we're more used to reading prose than in our poetry. When people are speaking in poetry in bow, they will use hyperbole, they will kind of overexaggerate their feelings. They may use misdirects, they may use metaphors and similes, sometimes without even realizing that they're doing so. Talking with people who are expressing their grief, I have experienced them being more figurative than they mean to be. Because they will be doing something like Job, where they're unnecessarily speaking against God. I haven't really come into contact with too many people who are angry at God, but those who are expressing discontent with God and his works, they're not necessarily angry at the goodness of God. Because the goodness of God is what they're, what they've experienced so far in their life, because they're Christians and they, they know the Bible, they know this is what's going on. But they're expressing discontent with the sin of the world. So when they're cursing the gifts that they have been given by God, usually they're indirectly speaking against sin. Or pain, or death, or anything that you can associate with the fallen world. And that's basically what Job is doing here. He's, he makes it more obvious by not addressing this to God, at least not here. When we get into some of his later speeches, he'll be talking directly to God in certain ways, and we'll be exploring those. But he's really speaking against the state of the world as it is, the afflictions of sin. So when, in the introduction, it says, like the introduction to chapters, it says things like, in all this, Job did not sin by charging God with wrongdoing. And in all this, Job did not sin in what he said. It is my position, and there will be people who would argue against me, but it is my position that Job maintained his righteousness in all these speeches. Now, he'll be expressing horrible ideas from time to time. But I do not think that he's saying anything wrong per se. And that's also why we were exploring Psalm eighty-eight, which ends with, darkness has become my closest friend. And we can actually pray that to God. So I think God does allow us to say these certain things, but if we're saying them out of hatred to God, rather than trying to understand God, trying to search for God, as Job is trying to do, then the intentionality betrays us and we're actually worrying against God instead of trying to understand him. Does that make sense? Hopefully that makes sense. So yes, the literal meaning, yeah, he is cursing something good that God has given him. But he's not taking issue per se with the goodness of God. He's not taking issue with God. He's taking issue with the afflictions that he has suffered since the day of his birth.
Well, if all things come from God, then the bad has come from God too, am I right?
And that's one of the things that Job and the friends are struggling with, yes. Now, there is a big difference between saying God allows bad things to happen, as we saw in chapters one and two, and God causes bad things to happen. Like God is the author of all sin and death and stuff like that. Looking into how we understand sinfulness, how we understand evil, and the right nature of punishment and the causes and the effects of sin. Sin is not exactly a thing in itself. And I mean that in terms that there is no substance of sin. There is no object you can say, this is sin that is placed in you. Oh, sorry, no, that's, that's a bad way to put it. Basically, I'm saying there's no.
More of an act.
Yeah. You'll find that sin is kind of a more of a directional action than it is a, an actual object. Looking into words for sin in the Old Testament, and I think the words, the Hebrew is a little bit more expressive than the Greek almost. They use three different words. Usually, they have a few more. But the three main words for sin express missing the mark. That is trying and failing. Perversion, or twisting. Something that perverts what is already there. So something that removes the goodness from something that already exists. And then there's also transgression, trespass. You're going beyond what you were supposed to do. So all, so these, all these three words you can actually find in Psalm fifty-one, David's lament, which we use in our liturgy all the time, and he's and he's using all these, he's using all three words, talking through all this. It's a corruption of the goodness of God. It's going away from the goodness of God. It is trespassing against the goodness of God, going beyond what we should be doing. So if God says, do not eat of the tree of knowledge of good and evil, and we go beyond that rule, that is a sin. Because we're doing something against what God has, has ordered the universe to do, to be an act. If if we are told, love your neighbor as yourself, and you do not do what is in your power to love your neighbor, maybe you have, maybe a homeless person walks past you. And I see them all the time in the street, and you have, and you can easily spare, I don't know, granola bar if you don't want to give them money or something. And you don't give that to them, then that would be more, missing the mark. You, you have, you can try to love your neighbor, but if you don't reach what you can or should, you're below the mark, and then that is also a sin. Perversion is a little bit different than what you, how do you explain perversion? It is recognizing the goodness of things and then twisting them to your own selfish end. So this would actually be more like the temptation to eat the fruit of knowledge of good and evil. And Satan says, if you eat this, you'll be like God. Now, that's not exactly a wrong statement, because God has the knowledge of good and evil. But if you're trying to pervert the use of the fruit, that you're trying to use it for a very different end than it's supposed to be, that you're trying to use it for your own selfish purposes, that would be more of a perversion. So theologians throughout time have explained sin more in turning away from the goodness of God, or using the goodness of God to something bad. And that's more or less the concept of sin. It's a separation of you from the goodness of God. So actually, with that concept in mind, I think I can better explain this. So if sin is a movement away from God, a turning from God, if what we have to say is horrible, if we're in a state that is already perverse, that is already affected by sin, then what is not of sin is turning to God and trying to reach Him there. Or being joined with Him in faith. As it says in Romans fourteen, whatever is not of faith is sin. So something in faith, and honestly, in faith, or working in faith. Although it might not hit the mark, we might still be falling, failing to reach the mark. Because it's in faith to God. God can make that work perfect, because He's bringing us to Himself. So at no point in time in the book of Job does Job actively try to run away from God. He's always very persistent, very steadfast in trying to understand God and approach God, and even pray to God. Even if what he has to say is affected by the effects of sin. Like his losses, his grief and everything. If he's, he's trying to approach God. So it's very much a directional thing, where he's trying, he's trying to reach God, because he's he knows that God is the only one who can help. If he relies on himself, then he's just gonna be going away from God, and then he's gonna be worse off than he was before, which is more or less the idea in chapter three, if he just stops everything, then he's gonna be completely without God, without the life, without the goodness of God, and in, in his naive understanding in this chapter, he'll be at rest. Be away from the activity of God in the world. Or in, where's the life, first God died. Completely, complete separation. However, I'm kind of skipping ahead a little bit, because we're focusing on section two of this. His understanding of shil should be read in light of what he says in chapter fourteen, where he recognizes that those in shil are still connected with God in somewhere. Well, we can explain that a lot when we come to that. That is a very interesting concept, how God, how God does that. Okay. Now, point number two on this. Or that we're reaching so far into this. Okay, so point number two, it is also a lament. Job is recognizing his current circumstances, and he's very mournful of all this. He's, he's sad, and he's expressing but not necessarily the discontent, but he's expressing the emotional and physical effects that it's having upon him. This is more like the sentiment, sighing becomes to me instead of food, my groans pour out like water. In Psalm forty-two, which we, which we read last week, there's a verse in there that says, tears have been my food day and night. That, that's the similar idea here. It is lamenting the circumstances you're in. Complaint. Yeah, Job wishes for something different. There's also quite a few complaint songs, where you simply just complain to God. Hey, the circumstances are really bad. According to your promises, things should be better. So why aren't they better? Job barely addresses God here. He leaves these more as existential why questions. But he's wondering, well, if we can't even enjoy life, then why on earth are we given life to begin with? That type of thing. You know, it's already addressed a lot. So specifically, the first section. The first section deals with day and night, light and darkness. Second section deals more with the appeal of death and shil. The third section is existential why questions. Why is this happening to me? The subjective questions. So verses three to ten. May the day of my birth perish, and the night it was said a boy is born. That day may it turn to darkness. May God above not care about it. May no light shine upon it. May darkness and deep shadow claim it once more. May clouds settle over it. May blackness overwhelm its light. That night, may thick darkness season. May it not be included among the days of the year, nor be entered in any of the months. May that night be barren. May no shout of joy be heard in it. May those who curse days curse that day. Those who are ready to rouse the lyanthem. May its morning stars become dark. May it wait for daylight and vane, and not see the first rays of dawn. For it did not shut the doors of womb on high trouble for my eyes. So Job uses the theme of light and darkness to express his various wishes. Light, what? Light in scripture, what, what does it normally represent, or where do you normally find light?
Jesus is light in the world.
Yep. And what else?
Regulated ascension.
Okay.
Light is usually associated with good, and darkness is bad.
Any things else?
Light doesn't allow the sin to hide.
Hmm, yeah, exposing light, yeah. Yeah, I, I think you got pretty much everything. So light in scripture has been used to express God's goodness within the world. Is, because it is God's goodness, it exposes everything that is in the dark. So everything in the dark that is sin, death, the devil, those are exposed, and they are basically tormented by the light. Because now the guilt is exposed as well. Something holy, something representing of God, specifically Jesus Christ. In John, chapter one, use Christ as the word, and in that word is life, and that life is the light of all men. One even, even easier mark is, it also represents creation, first thing that was created. Let, let there be light.
It can also be used as a measure.
Oh, yeah. Oh. So Thursday night and the, yeah, yeah, yeah. Daylight, okay, yeah, yeah. Oh, definitely. Which is also which also reflects the Hebrew text a little bit better. So Job does not say day of my birth specifically in Hebrew. He just says, the day? Which day are you talking about? Well, in the next one, he says, and the night it was said a boy is born. So typically, we just say the day of his birth. But it's more ambiguous as the day, which can also represent the time that he is alive on earth. So it that was some, some helpful music from Louise.
Sorry about that. I get these.
No worries. So we can also say, in the day of Abraham, in the day of Moses, that type of thing. So in the time period of this. That's more or less what Job is saying. Because he's looking back specifically to the Cause he's looking back specifically to the time of his birth, when his day began. But it can also be represented by this entire life. And Job seems to be using more or less all the uses that we named in this section. Except for Jesus has a life because Jesus, there's another fifteen hundred years until he comes, but Job is lamenting being exposed in God's goodness because the goodness is allowing him to see the darkness that is coming in upon him. Doesn't want to reflect on the grief and the loss. He doesn't want the goodness exposing how bad his pain is. He doesn't want the goodness of God to enter into his life because the goodness of God also gives him life. Gives him the creation, which means that he must suffer through everything that he has in this life, which is darkness. Hmm, I'll leave that for a minute. He is expressing in this section something along the lines of a, an uncreation, a de-creation. So since God created the heavens and the earth through light for light Christ and you first created light itself. When Job is hoping for the darkness, he's kind of hoping for an uncreation, something to de-create himself so he doesn't have to be. And this, this is different from suicidal thoughts, this is, sorry, maybe not quite. This is different from a wanting for death. Job doesn't want that, he just wants to have nothingness. Yeah. However, he, that's not how the universe is set up. We can't just be uncreated and arguably being uncreated would be worse than that. Would be worse than even being in hell because at that point you no longer have the goodness of God creating you. So when we're talking about sin and what, what does sin mean and what, what is evil, is God the author of evil? No, he's, he's not. The other aspects of creation are moving away from him and that, and God has given us the ability to do so, the, the free will to move away from him. But he does not want us to go into a state where there's zero, zero aspect of his goodness, zero aspect of his grief. So he, so he allows us to remain within creation. But directly exposed to him. So in our sinfulness, we are directly exposed to the light of God and that is more properly hell. It's a separation from God, but God is still present. Allowing you existence. And I'm sorry, that is a very philosophical way to try and understand this. But he does not remove people from existence outright, he allows them to exist. But it's not a state of life, it's perpetual state of death. So if Job is considering being in darkness, being uncreated and not being able to do so because he would be in a continuous state of death. He needs the light, he needs life. He needs Jesus Christ, who is the light of the world? Who is the, who is the word who gives life to all people? And which is the light of all people. So when Job is expressing his sorrows here, much like you would hear anybody in extreme grief for his, experiencing their sorrow. They need Christ. They need God, they need the goodness that they're created, brought back to them. Which is what they're lamenting. That they don't have the goodness of God. They may not be articulating it as, I don't have the goodness of God and I need it. But that's essentially what's going on. They are deprived of the goodness God first gave us in the Garden of Eden and now that we are deprived of it, we need to get back there. Which is new heavens and the new earth, which God will recreate at the end of the age when Jesus Christ comes back. So all this leads back to Christ. Now, let's see next in the notes, darkness and shadow of death. And then IV, so it's may darkness and deep shadow. Life. Deep shadow is actually a very rare word in the Old Testament. Actually, I have it's up here. So it's a very rare word in the Old Testament. I'm just going to check how often it's used. Appears eighteen times. The entire Old Testament appears eighteen times. However, you're very familiar with one, with one usage. Psalm twenty-three, even though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I fear no evil for thou art with me. It's rare as a word as it is, it does appear in the song. It should be fairly familiar because it's on coming three. However, does not appear in the songs all that often. It's actually most common in Job. Ten. Appears ten times in Job. So over half of the usages of this word in the Old Testament have appeared in Job. Properly speaking. Oh, I even did the numbers here. Um, properly speaking, it represents death and shil. Kind of the land of the dead. We find this later on in, in God's speeches. Job, chapter thirty-eight, verse seventeen. It appears again and there, God is talking about the heights and depths. Specifically. Have the gates of death been shown to you? Have you seen the gates of the shadow of death? So he's talking, so shadow of death that itself, it, it's basically the boundary of the valley of death that you would enter into or shil, the land of death.
My Bible says bloom and in darkness, it doesn't use shadow. This is the Bible that Pastor Lyons recommended.
Which one?
That we use in Bible study, the English Standard Version.
Oh, ESV, okay. Yeah, um, this is also a little bit why I prefer the NIV for Job anyways. ESV is very good at giving precise meanings for various words, but then IV allows for a bit better flow in poetry. So for Job, I prefer NIV, most other books, ESV. Yeah, so trying, trying to get precise, a, a more precise meaning anyways, especially poetic meaning would be closer to idea of death and shil. Which is a recurring theme in Job, and, and we'll find that out as we go through. So Job is expressing darkness in comparison to light and deep shadow in opposition to God. So this is without the light of God, without his goodness, without, without him essentially. So this is as far, as far away from God as you can possibly get. Oh, I also have here in a couple of the notes. The wicked live and hide there. Which is also how you know that this is representative of shil, is the, where the wicked go to rest, rest. And God can bring the darkness of death to light. Trying to remember, that one, twelve twenty-two. Oh yeah, he reveals the deep things of darkness and brings deep shadows, that is, the shadow of death into light. So God still exposes the wickedness of those who are in hell. The idea in, in Psalm one ninety, sorry, one thirty-nine captures it very well, even though it's not using the exact same words, captures it very well. Where the Psalmist is saying, where can I go from your spirit? Where, where can I flee from your presence? If I go up to the heavens, you are there. If I make my bed in the death, that is shil, you are there. If I rise on the wings of the dawn, if I settle on the far side of the sea, even there, your hand will guide me, your right hand will hold me fast. So even in hell, you cannot escape God. It's as far away from God as you can possibly get. But you're not away from him completely.
You're away from his goodness, but not his authority.
Yes, basically. Yeah. And again, this, this, okay, I, I think I expressed this before. This is my opinion, it's not doctrine. But the fires of hell, the fire in the Old Testament is usually is with some frequency represented with God's wrath. So if we're saying that there is hellfire and that imagery is used a lot of the time in the New Testament, then I would say that that would be God actively working wrath by his law on the people in hell. So he's not away from them, he's in their presence and he's working his justice upon them. So there's, so they have no goodness in them, which is why they are kind of lost in this sense, of course.
Isn't that a separation from God? Isn't hell a separation from God?
It is. But it's, it's also a separation from what we would say is, is I'm losing the word. I can say. His I wouldn't quite put it that way. Antecedent will, there we go. We're separated from his antecedent will. So what that, what that means is initially he is good and benevolent and wants to give us all good things. And he will give us these things. He wants to give us these things. But there's also his consequent will, which is in consequence to his law. So he wants to give us all the good stuff. But he cannot because he still has to work justice within the world. So if we have separated ourselves from him in sin, then God will allow us to be separated from him, but he still means to treat us as a part of creation. And will apply the punishment due to us. Yeah. So yeah, there is a separation and also a presence and it is, it's paradoxical, I'll say that, it's paradoxical. But Lutherans tend to be a bit more comfortable with paradoxes than some other denominations because we're reading we, we try to read scripture in its wholeness rather than focus on one part over another. So in one sense, yes, we are very much separated from God, we are separated by sin, so we do not enjoy the promises that he gives to us. However, we're very much still in the presence of God because he is omnipresent, he's everywhere. So we're still exposed to his divine justice, which will condemn our sinfulness.
He doesn't leave us.
Yeah. Yeah. That's actually a perfect way to put it. Yeah, it's whenever you're looking into some of these passages which deal with our eternal estate and his goodness. You will find that scripture will time and time again reiterate his steadfast love from everlasting to everlasting to from generation to generation. He does not leave us. However, if we are apart from faith, if we are apart from his grace because of sin, then he doesn't leave us per se, we just do not have all the benefits associated with it. Okay, I, I'll, I'll, I'll go down a slight rabbit trail going to first Peter, chapter one. One, one of the, this was a passage I was studying very much in depth before I came out here. So this was the last semester of seminary. I had to do a report on, on this. And I was looking through all these things. So chapter one, verses three to five, that's a small little unit there. Praise be to the God and Father, our Lord Jesus Christ, in his great mercy, he has given us new birth into a living hope through the resurrection of Jesus Christ from the dead and into an inheritance that can never perish, spoil or fade, kept in heaven for you. Who through faith are shielded by God's power until the coming of the salvation that is ready to be revealed the last time. And I, and I can't remember what exactly the words ESV is used, I was looking at ESV a lot, but a little bit different there. Guarded by God's power, guarded in heaven, something along those lines. The basic idea is that Jesus' resurrection from death is a living hope and because it's a living hope in Christ, it can never die. It is inheritance that can never perish or spoil or fade. It is an eternal inheritance because it is won by Jesus Christ, who is himself God and eternal, since he offered himself upon the cross for us is not just one lifetime that he gives us, but an eternity that he gives us by his divine nature. So never, never, will never fade. But this inheritance is guarded, oh, sorry, no, no, also, also put in there, it's, it's guarded by God, it's guarded by God. So who's stronger than God? No one, it can never be taken away. God, God has the power to do this. Okay, but it is received through faith. It is given to those of faith. So it's kept in heaven for you who through faith are guarded by God's power. So if we are apart from faith, unbelieved, we're in sin, we, we're separated in, from, in our sinfulness. That means that we do not receive this and, and we do not have this inheritance. So it is not applied to us. However, since this is an eternal inheritance, a living hope that we have in the resurrection of Jesus that can ever perish, spoil or fade, it will never die. It is always guarded for us by God. We just do not receive it if we are outside faith. Yeah, so God, God constantly, he's constantly maintains that he's steadfast in his power, power and love. But he allows us to walk away from this eternal inheritance, the, the salvation that we might, that we can receive through Jesus Christ. It's a very subtle thing when it comes up there, but I found that explaining it very, very well, at least to me. It's a very subtle thing when it comes up there, but I found that explained very, very well, at least to me. I know you're pondering on it, but I'll try and get through the rest of this section here before we have to jet off in about 15 minutes or so. So continuing on, verses 3 to 10. So the idea of darkness and deep shadow claiming the day of Job's birth does not actually, well, cannot actually do what Job kind of wants it to do in the sense of making it nothing or completely removing it from God, so he's not faced not having to understand what goodness is and realize that he doesn't have that in his life. So he wants to get away from it, but that type of thing is impossible, as Job will draw out in his later speeches when he's saying that God can reach down into jail. God can be in jail. One thing I'd like you to draw out is may those who curse days curse, or, oh yeah, I forgot about that. There's a little note in my NIV, "Those who curse the sea." Yes, that is a textual type, that's a textual variant. So in Hebrew, day is yom, sea is yam. Depending, and in Hebrew, you also have this vowel called a pah. Oh, so no, no, so this is comments, this is comments. This is a comment which can be an ah or an uh, so it can be yam or yom, day or sea. So that's, so honestly, Job might actually be using a double entendre, he might actually be using the word yom and meaning yom, or using the word yom and meaning yom. Because he wants to curse his day, but he also wants to, he's also bringing up Leviathan, which lives in the sea. Here's something very poetic, yeah, he's using he's kind of linking the two there. So why is Leviathan popping up out of nowhere? There's a couple of different explanations that have been put forward. And it really depends on your view of Leviathan, and this is given in this particular instance of Leviathan coming up here as something that magicians of Job's day, sorcerers are trying to conquer, they're trying to conjure up this great sea monster from the depths of the sea. Some commentators have associated Leviathan with demonic activity or mythical monster that you will that's associated with witchcraft, etc., etc. I don't put too much credence in all these. But the idea is basically that these are pagans who are trying to summon a beast to work on their behalf. This is one of the more obvious references to mythology of Job's day. They actually come up more often than you would think. Job, I can't remember if any of the friends do. Job specifically, in his speeches, he mentions two, three times, maybe a couple, maybe a bit more. He references in passing gods from different religions. And he's not invoking them, saying that they're real or anything, it would be somewhat like us referencing Greek mythology or Roman mythology today, they're representing ideals. And even a lot of Christian writers have written about Greek or Roman mythology, reference these things, these things, they don't actually believe in them, but they're using them as literary devices to express particular ideas. So when Job is using the double entendre here, "Those who curse days, those who curse sea, the seas," he might just be signaling may this evil thing that has a reference in foreign mythology be brought about because it's representative of power, evil, force of the wicked, stuff like that. When Leviathan comes up in chapter 41 of the book, God portrays it in very interesting terms, actually. And it's really hard to tell exactly what Leviathan is because we know that God is, that those chapters that God is talking about these things, he's being figurative, but how figurative is he trying to be? So when you reference Leviathan and he's breathing fire and whatnot, is that a metaphor, or is that liberal? My question. But when God is talking about this creature, he's trying to describe it in his full ferociousness. And he's not trying to convey that this is a mythological creature or foreign god that is subject to me, looking how powerful, no, he's saying that this is a very powerful creature that you have no control over, you have no control over the powers of nature, therefore just leave it to me, who is the one who takes care of these great things that you can't possibly help us do. Bringing that concept here. When Job is saying, "May those who curse the seas, the day, be ready to rouse Leviathan," well, no human being can actually do that. God himself, at the end of the book says, "You can't do that, you can't control this thing." You have to let there be some, something in this world that is outside of your ability to control. However, nothing is outside of my ability to control it. So God himself is above Leviathan and God can control it. So when Job is trying to have controls over the days of his life, he doesn't have control, God has proper control over it. And we can recognize that even though Job's saying it, he needs God, he needs the control of God, and he's searching for the comfort of God working within creation, which is answered in God's speeches at the end of the book. Slight mention to Jeremiah, chapter 20, verses 14 to 18. The prophet Jeremiah, he has a few laments and complaints in his book. Quite understandably so, given all the stuff that he has to deal with. One of them, or a section of one of them, is very similar to this section of Job, where Jeremiah is complaining about the day of his birth. We still have some time, let's go there. Jeremiah, chapter 20. Jeremiah, chapter 20, this is 14 to 18. I think you might be a little bit bored of hearing me talk, so I'll open this up for somebody else to read.
"Okay, curse it be the day I was born. May the day my mother bore me not be blessed. Curse it be the man who brought my father thine news, who made him very glad, saying, 'A child is born to you,' a son. May that man be like the towns of the Lord overthrew without pity. May he hear wailing in the morning, a battle cry at noon. For he did not kill me in the womb, but my mother has my grave, her womb norish forever. Why did I ever come out of the womb, to see trouble and sorrow, and to end my days in shame?"
Sounds pretty similar. Yeah. It's hard to know if this had this had any influence with Job. It is the proposal of, let's see, finds that these were completely independent and they just sound similar. This has been echoed by a few other people I've read. But I would say that given some of the other passages within Jeremiah, which sounds a little bit similar to Job, Jeremiah tends to use some Joban words more than other writers in scripture. So I would say that the book of Job influenced Jeremiah and helped inspire him to write this, which would mean that the book of Job came earlier than Jeremiah and was fairly well-known. Just to give you a bit of dating. And if you're also looking at this with the idea that Job was considered or at least the theme of Job, maybe they didn't know, maybe the book didn't directly influence this, but the themes found within Job are present within the mouths of prophets. And they themselves are basically giving you permission to use this strong language. Now with Hebrew poetry also, it goes through cycles. So sometimes the middle point, or even the first point, is where the focal focus is. So not necessarily like we do with climax at the end. So where Jeremiah is how Jeremiah is understanding this speech, we should also read that in light of the rest of the complaint, where he uses some other strong language, "Oh Lord, you deceived me and I was deceived. You overpowered me and prevailed. I'm ridiculed all day long, everyone mocks me. Whenever I speak, I crowd proclaiming violence and destruction. So the word of the Lord has brought me insult and reproach all day long. But if I say I will not mention him or speak any more in his name, his word is in my heart like a fire. A fire should up in my bones. I am weary of holding it in. Indeed, I cannot. I hear many whispering, terror on every side, report him, let's report him. All my friends are waiting for me to slip, saying, perhaps he will be deceived. Then we will prevail over him and take our revenge on him. The Lord is with me like a mighty warrior, so my persecutors will stumble and not prevail. They will fail and be thoroughly disgraced. Their sinner will never be forgotten. O Lord Almighty, you who examine the righteous and probe the heart and mind, let me see your vengeance upon them, or to you I have committed my cause. Sing to the Lord, give praise to the Lord, he rescues the life of the needy from the hands of the wicked." And then he goes, "Curse it be the day I..." So he's saying this in light of knowing God will rescue him. He's expressing the circumstances he's in, and he's expressing how he's come to this situation, mainly because people have rejected the word of God and therefore rejected him. So he's undergoing trial and torment. I think it was right before here, he was in stocks, yep, he was in stocks right before here. So people just kind of pass by and ridiculing him. And he ends on a rather down note, but he's saying the down note in light of the high note. When we're grieving, it's not a straight line, it's not a progress. We can go back and forth along the line, we can say one minute, "Oh, thank God for all my life," and then the next moment, you go, "Why on earth did you, who caused me to be born, O Lord?" There's an ebb and flow to it. You don't necessarily have to make have to gauge yourself by what progress you're making, because you can in your grief, go back to some of your earlier emotions. It's not wrong, it's just what it is. But when you're in those early emotions, when you're in understanding of turmoil and sadness, you can say, you can express all these horrible feelings, all these depressing thoughts in light of knowing that your God saves you, that he cares for you, that he will protect you. Which is which we'll come to in the book of Job, going, kind of seeing the ebb and flow, the hopefulness, and then the despair, the hopefulness, the despair. We shouldn't treat grief as a straight line, doesn't work that way. Any thoughts before before we close? If not, for a closing prayer, I will be using Psalm 88. 88. Let us pray. "O Lord, the God who saves me, day and night I cry out before you. May my prayer come before you. Turn your ear to my cry. For my soul is full of trouble and my life draws near the grave. I am counted among those who go down to the pit. I am like a man without strength, I am set apart with the dead, like the slain who lie in the grave, whom you remember no more, who are cut off from your care. You have put me in the lowest pit, in the darkest depths. Your wrath lies heavily upon me. You have overwhelmed me with all your ways. You have taken from me my closest friends, you have made me repulsive to them. I am confined, I cannot escape. My eyes are dim with grief. I call to you, O Lord, every day. I spread out my hands to you. Do you show your wonders to the dead? Do those who are dead rise up and praise you? Is your love declared in the grave, or your faithfulness in destruction? Are your wonders known in the place of darkness, or your righteousness in the land of oblivion? But I cry to you for help, O Lord. In the morning, my prayer comes before you. Why, O Lord, do you reject me and hide your face from me? From my youth I have been afflicted and close to death, I have suffered your terrors and end in despair. Your wrath has swept over me, your terrors have destroyed me. All day long they surround me like a flood, they have completely engulfed me. You have taken my companions and loved ones from me. The darkness is my closest friend. But, O Lord, we know that you are the one who saves us and that you have sent us our Savior, Jesus Christ, O Lord, who through his own suffering and death in this world guides us into everlasting life. Lord, when we are in despair, help us ever look upon Jesus Christ and find hope in him. In his name I pray. Amen.